Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen regular session meeting Tuesday, April 18th, 2017 at 7:00 p.m. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First off, before we get started here, I'd like to welcome Tom Hul, newly elected Selectman. Last week, we introduced Andrew Alwood. Welcome, gentlemen, and good luck.
Thank you.
Now, I'll turn the meeting over to the Town Administrator for reorganization of the board.
Can we hold off until Roland? Just table it till later in the meeting when he shows up?
Do you expect to show up?
No, I had gotten word that he was not coming. He's attending calling hours for a friend or family member, I can't remember which, but he was attending a calling hour this evening. And I got word probably about an hour and a half ago.
Okay.
So, he will not be here.
So, in the spirit, as we did last week, we'll wait until our next meeting to reorganize?
Make a motion.
I make a motion to place reorganization onto our next scheduled meeting.
Can I hear your second?
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Announcements, Planning Board, I have a public hearing on April 24th, Monday, at 7:00 p.m. Here, Senior Senator. They're actually four separate.
The meeting is at 7:00, but the public hearing starts at 7:15, 7:20, 7:30, and 7:40, I believe.
And Hillary will call the same.
Hi, I'm the, um...
Well, just one more announcement.
Planning Board? Uh, no.
Planning Board, Finance Committee meeting will be, the public hearing for the Finance Committee will be first of May, Monday, 5/1, 2017. And that will be at...
The Senior Senator.
The Senior Senator.
Mr. Chairman, this was just voted upon last night. We did meet on the holiday. As I've said a number of times, the Finance Committee has been meeting very regularly, and this year, we have had more than a dozen meetings just on the budget alone, never mind looking at overhauling our financial management practices. I know the Chairman was there last evening, and one of the things that I just want to put out to you is that even though this public hearing is going to be on the first, we had a normally scheduled regular Board of Selectmen meeting. And I think the Chair of the Finance Committee, as well as our Chairman here, had talked about the need for the Selectmen to also be part of that hearing process. And so, we are considering, and I think the Chairman was going to bring it up in Selectmen's form later, to consider actually having the joint meeting with them and to attend the public hearing as part of our continual collaboration with the Finance Board.
Thank you.
Okay.
The, we have this evening, we have minutes of April 4th to approve. Mr. Hul is exempt from this. The three of us here. Can I hear him? Entertained a motion to approve.
There were some typos, if you will, in the minutes where it's, for the approval of the minutes, it only mentioned that Mr. Barrett for the first one abstained. And I abstained for both of them because I wasn't a part of the board. So, I think we should amend that.
Where was that? I'm sorry.
Um, after announcements that says the minutes.
Oh, oh, down below.
Yeah. And just to have it clarified that I wasn't voting.
That the only one?
There were some grammatic misspellings and stuff, but nothing too serious.
Okay. Just point them out, if you would like, and then we'll make...
Um, I mark them down if you care to.
Okay.
So, we'll table those minutes.
Sure. We'll make the corrections and I'll submit them afterwards.
Sometimes what I do, Andrew, is if I notice things like that, sometimes I'll just forward them.
Yeah.
When we get the packet, sometimes...
Yeah, I got that late last night, so I only had time to read it today.
Yeah, because I think we typically get the, we didn't get the electronic package this time, or at least I didn't get it.
I got it today, I think.
Okay.
Well, you didn't because you hadn't set up with the email account, yeah.
So, but sometimes if it's something like that, I'll just forward ahead of time. And then, that way, we can sign and...
Sure.
But the packets, just so that you know, did go out on Friday. And there was an issue with, I think, the connection between Andrew and our IT person. And that didn't take place till later. But the packets, and I had met with him before to tell him the packets are usually there ahead of time at the policeman's station, in case you don't get the electronic version for some reason.
Okay. Moving ahead, Departments and Boards, I'd like to invite our Town Planner, Hillary Carney.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. As Mr. Repulser expressed, I am having four public hearings on Monday, two of which are for bylaw changes, one of which is just a simple clarification to an existing bylaw, which is the accessory apartment, we're just adding one word. Because the way it reads now, it's not very clear as to, it states, the square footage is based on the dwelling, but it doesn't explain if it's the house or the garage or the combination. So, we're just trying to clarify that. That's the first one. The second one is a moratorium for recreational marijuana to buy us time because the state really doesn't have their act together. The cart was put before the horse in this one because the legislature was not drafted by the state legislature. It was actually from Colorado people who had already passed it in Colorado. So, it's not your typical legislation, and therefore, there's more, still more questions than there are answers. So, this will buy us time. It's my understanding that the way it's going to unfold is that people who already have medical marijuana licenses will be the people that will receive the licenses to sell the recreational marijuana first. And their first 75 will go that way. So, I'm also looking at possibly instituting a medical marijuana bylaw at the same time, in the fall perhaps, or even maybe next year. So, we get that on the books, not that I'm anticipating anyone is really, might take advantage of it because you need a retail space to do that. But it's good to have it on your books, just in case somebody's creative enough to find a location where they think they can sell it. But again, that's what the, what's, what the other one is by for. The second...
Do we know currently how many people within town has that medical? Just a number? You, we don't, that's not data or information that we're given.
HIPAA information, I don't think we could get that if we wanted to.
So, we don't know how many people within our community that could?
No.
And does that include someone from another town saying, "I found a retail space in Millville," and coming to Millville?
It's possible.
Okay.
We did have people who approached us from Rhode Island, who thought they had it all worked out, and they thought they had a location and up on Lincoln Street. And they didn't do enough research. You know, they were coming from Rhode Island, they were familiar with what was going on in Rhode Island, and they didn't know about that you need to have a host agreement. You know, there was just a whole lot of information that they were not privy to. So, they have gone away, and we haven't heard from them since. And maybe they won't come back, maybe they will, I don't know. But the other reason I'm here, I guess, is to discuss the road acceptances. There's two subdivisions that I was notified, they thought they wanted their roads accepted. So, we've started the process of which you've gotten the public hearing ad notifications of. And that's Afonso Estates, I believe the last two streets there, which is Pollet Way and Twin Pond Circle. I think that was the last phase. And they think they're ready. I was under the assumption that they were ready until I went out with our on-call engineering inspector, and we tromped around out in the rain that horrendous Thursday that was cold and wet and pouring for like three hours, and checked all the detention basins. They are not, they have not been touched since I think they were initially dug, I don't know, 15 years ago. So, they need some work there, as you can see in the report. The other ones, which I knew had needed work, and those are Richard Hurtow's Carriage 2.
Is Afonso Estates still owned by the same developer?
Yes.
It's not a sub-person?
No, it's Dominic Afonso, yes.
Yep, okay.
Matter of fact, he hand-delivered me the check for the inspections last week. The other ones are Richard Hurtow, he and, he owns part of it, and I believe Robert Page owns the other part of it. Richard Hurtow is interested in getting his two and a half streets done, which would be Rondon, Hurtow, and part, a piece of Albert. We went out the same day and did his inspections. His detention basins are in a lot better shape, at least they have actual wetland growth in them. But he has not paved sidewalks, and he has not done the final paving on Rondon. And there's some cracks in the binder coat. The inspector suggested just sealing those. The reason, the ration, before he put the binder coat on, the rationale for that is if he tries to dig it up and then replace that section, it's going to create more seams, which will cause more, more likelihood that the top coat could crack. So, by sealing it, it would, it would do what it needed to do, is seal the base, the binder coat, and then it would have a cleaner surface for the top coat. He would also put a leveling layer in too, before he puts the top coat on. There was a section, Hurtow seems to have been paved already, and there is a crack that's appeared there, and that's only three years old. So, he was suggested in the report, he should actually cut that section out and repave it because a road should be cracking after three years.
So, Rondo Road, is that Thunder Road?
Well, it's my understanding...
Because I was confused. I'm like, I didn't know we had a Thunder Road in Millville.
Well...
And I, the only thing I could assume that it was Rondo.
I have, I have seen the plans, and I do actually have a copy of the Afonso Estate plans. I do not have a copy of Hurtow. But it was my understanding that it was originally approved as Thunder, what was it? Double-ended cul-de-sac, like a bowtie. And it's my understanding that the second end of it, which would have been Thunder Road, was extended and connected with Albert. So, therefore, the Thunder part went away and became an extension of Albert. So, now, we have a loop of sorts with a little piece off the side. So, Thunder has gone away, and those plans have been revised. So, the revised plans don't show Thunder, but that's what it would have been. It was this double-ended cul-de-sac that became Albert. And he's, and that section is what he's proposing is going to be ready. I'm not quite sure it's going to be ready, but he, I talked to him this morning, and he said he's, he acknowledges that he has two weeks to get it done. I said, "At this point in time, I'm going to have the inspector go out the week before the annual meeting to do his final inspections." And he says, "Well, what if it's not ready?" I said, "Well, tell me it's not ready, and I won't have him go inspected." It's as simple as that. And we have discussed in the abstract that he gets two bites of the apple. If they're not ready for May, November might be a better shot. But at this point in time, everyone keeps assuring me that, "No, we're going to be ready. We're going to be ready. We're going for it."
So, we are three weeks from town meeting?
Yup. Minus a day.
I know this won't be a popular, but for me, this is where we were last year, with the same road? Yes?
Yes.
So, the same road was on for last year. And because we didn't have all of the information, there was not things done. We didn't have this in hand, at least this year. We have that. And I'm not an engineer guy, but I can tell that there's things wrong. There's, I mean, it's, it's in layman terms.
Right.
And it's pretty clear-cut. I personally don't, I don't want to do this at the 11th hour.
Well...
And have them putting something in the next two weeks and really no time to see... Okay, so typically, this would all be done, and then we'd have probably a year or six months to see how the work holds up, and then we do it. By having them do the work in the next two weeks, we don't know what the next six months or a year will bring.
No, but the binder coat...
Or a winter.
But the binder coat has been there for 12 years, and the binder coat's in good shape, except for the few cracks that are in the cul-de-sac. So, that's an indication of how it would hold up. But I, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. I think in the next, he said he has, he's working with partners, and he says he has to get them moving forward. I think by Monday, at the public hearing, I'll have a better idea how he's progressing with this. And it may have to be pulled, but at this point in time, I, I felt I needed to play it out.
So, we're, we're just talking about that one particular road for, in...
Rondo or Hurtow?
Rondo.
Okay.
Is that what we're talking about right now?
Yep.
Or are we talking about his other roads too, that he's looking for?
Hurtow needs to replace a section. It's got a six-foot long crack.
I understand all that. But right now, we're just discussing Rondo.
Right.
On the, on the other streets, he's got ADA issues. He's got trees planted in the way of the...
Somebody else's, in the easement, yes.
In the easement.
All these things came to light during the inspection.
Right, thank God we did them. So... Well, my concern too is, piggyback on the ADA, is the woman who was in here earlier, she lives there, and she's concerned about the playground. I mean, how are we going to do the, you know, she expressed that Central Street and her own neighborhood has an ADA issue. And we know that there's someone there in a wheelchair. So, not, you know, that, that makes a difference because you need to have it done.
Right.
There's just, I just feel there's a lot.
The sidewalks are ADA sort of compliant, they're not built to specs. So, those have to be redone. They are accessible, so the woman in the wheelchair can, you know, there are ramps, they're just not built to spec. The thing is, and I'm, and I'm pretty sure that we had this conversation with the Planning Board, is how closely are you going to hold their feet to the fire? And they, you know, do you want them to build everything, you know, have everything done per the plans? And the consensus was, yeah, they did. So, it's a lot of work that needs to be done.
This is sounding, I was going to turn into a Brown Bear Circle.
Oh, I know. Well, I am riding shotgun on it. I don't know anything about Brown Bear Circle.
I'm just, I just feel that there's a lot here.
Mm-hmm.
And I know in the past, we've said, "Oh, let's get everything done and give it the winter, and let's see, let's see how the work holds up." Rather than, I just think getting something thrown together and, and if it's, for me, if it's on the agenda, if it's on the warrant, you know, you can ask for it to be stricken, but it doesn't mean it will be.
No.
And that, and that's a concern that I have.
Well, we can ask the, ask them to volunteer, or the Planning Board can pull it. I mean, they're sponsoring the article, so they can pull the article. And I am going to advise the Planning Board to hold the public hearing, to close the public hearing, but not to make any recommendation or any vote until hours before the annual town meeting opens. So, that, that is that last inspection.
Right. One of the things that we like to try to do is allow the public to see, at least on the warrant, how the Planning Board would recommend.
I understand.
And since we're having that hearing on May 1st, I think it would be important for us to at least have that recommendation.
Okay.
Because, you know, for the acceptances part, and also for the, the two zoning bylaw changes, because we're looking for the support, two-thirds support for the zoning bylaw changes. And since roads are a really important issue to be able to take on for a community, and I think one of the things I will give credit to Hillary is ask her to follow up with TEC Engineering to bring them on board for on-call technical services because I've found them to be very helpful. And as you can see from the report that they generated and the work that they're doing with Hillary, I think it's, it's worth our weight in gold to have actually hired them to be able to do that. So, I appreciate her work there. I think with this, though it raises an awful lot of questions about whether we're really pushing things, one of the things I think are important is it's not just a planning issue, and they just do the work in a vacuum. I think we have a Highway Survey as well, who I think would like to have input or inspectional opportunities before the work is done. Because once work is done, you don't necessarily know what's being put under, under code. You have to, you know, it's not a, just a matter of just assuming that the developer or the construction, private construction developer is going to do exactly what you want. It's no different than building a house and knowing you have to have inspections at some point. Not just from the on-call people who are looking at something in hindsight, but perhaps during it.
Right.
And since we have, I know have a history in this town of having accepted roads that have not been in conformance and have led to now other issues where we're going backwards and having to do major repairs to them, I think it behooves us to make sure that they are not only meeting specs afterwards, but during the actual time in which they're trying to meet what we consider to be standards for acceptance by the town. So, I don't know if you want to, I know we have Brian on the agenda for a construction update on, on different roads, but I don't know if you want to come up and join Hillary to talk about what your goal would be, maybe working with our Town Planner.
Have you seen this report?
I have. I was there when she received it on Friday. So, I got it firsthand. I had a good read-through with it. Hurtow Road, Albert Drive, and Rondon, to me, will not be ready for this up-and-coming town meeting. You talk about letting the road sit for a winter. Albert Drive and Hurtow Road were paved, I believe, top-coated three years ago. And here we are with the report in front of you, with Albert Drive with a major crack on it that they want to see cut out. That road was paved at the ninth hour in the month of November with none of the Planning Board members knowing, myself not knowing. And as we found out it being done, the work was being done, myself and the, one of the Planning Board members at the time, which is the Chairman of the Planning Board now, went up there and told them to stop because it was not going to be approved. And they said they weren't stopping. That was their choice. So, here we are, you know, the road sat now for three years, and we have a major crack going on. So, that tells me there's something else going on with the binder underneath, with water infiltration, with the drainage pipe leaking. I can't tell you what it is. But there is a major crack, and I have, I have seen it. In the same location, there's a catch basin in the past year that had caved in, and when I say caved in, dropped about two, two and a half feet. They put what they told me was a temporary patch on it, and they were going to excavate that up and fix it correctly prior to us having the road accepted. The sidewalks, you know, the report is very good. It does tell us what needs to be done, and they need their top coat, the curbing needs to be all dug out and regrouded. As far as I'm concerned, all of the retention ponds, including, she spoke about the ones up on Pollet Way and Twin Pond Circle, but the ones up on Albert Drive and Hurtow are in good shape and have, you know, the wetland growth growing in them. They're, they're responding well, but they do need to be maintained prior to us accepting...
Just be cleaned out.
Cleaned out of sediment and/or lodged trees that are growing on the perimeters and edges. Because as you know, I mean, once we accept it, we're, the Highway Department's maintaining those.
Right.
And that all falls under stormwater. And stormwater is only growing to a bigger animal that's coming, you know, in the future every day. I agree that it is not feasible, in my opinion, to be put on the town warrant for this year.
My suggestion is that you come to the Planning Board meeting.
Put it in.
And express those opinions in front of the developer so that he hears these firsthand. Me telling him your thoughts are one thing. Hearing them directly from you, I think, would be also beneficial.
A few weeks back, at a meeting, I said to Mrs. Callahan, I said, "We need to get the Planning Board on board that if this is going to happen this year, I don't want, I don't want what happened last year to happen again." And it's happening again. But now, we have more information about why we shouldn't do it. Last year, we just went off of our gut feeling going, "We don't have any information, so therefore, we're not, we, we took it off." We have to post the warrant, seven days minimum. We usually try to like to do 14. But we have to have it posted. I'm not sure what your timeframe was.
Friday, I'm looking.
Friday to post it. So, with the, so we, we have to make a decision tonight whether to keep them on or take them off, or...
And I understand this, and I have no knowledge of past years, obviously. So, I'm just going on procedure. You know, they came to me, they told me they're ready. I was frankly quite disappointed with Afonso. I, I thought they were going to be in much better shape. And when I, we ever went out there and I saw those detention basins, I was like, "Whoa, these are not ready." I mean, there's a wall that's, that's, you know, supposed to be a swell wall, that's all crumbling down. I mean, they're totally uneven, they have a drain plug out there that says sewer. It's like...
I think one of the things I'd like to share with the Board that I had spoken to Hillary about, knowing that neither one of us were here last year to have witnessed what may have occurred in terms of trying to get new streets adopted, one of the things I expressed to her is that rather than finding out about it by just bringing out the engineers and starting the process there, that one of the things I think that would be really helpful, and perhaps the Planning Board would think about doing that, is that if you are approached by a developer and they are looking to have a private road adopted by the town, that it'd actually get put on the Planning Board agenda to discuss, so that you would also be able to notify, because we're trying to do a lot more communication between departments. So, I applaud Hillary for getting in contact and going out with the on-call engineers. But before even having it as an actual agenda item on the Planning Board's agenda so that they could raise these same questions, and perhaps also ask our Highway Survey to come in and say, you know, preliminarily, he could even do, you know, a review, and then, then of course, give that input also to the Planning Board, so that by the time we actually send out the on-call engineers, it's after they have either, you know, looked at all the possibilities, looked at the plans with you, and then came up with a strategy on how to go out, instead of trying to do four different ones, which have never really, I don't know if they were on the agenda yet for the Planning Board. I know they're coming up, you're having it on a public hearing, but even for the Board of Selectmen, I like to have something on the agenda before we actually go to try to take them.
We did talk about them informally. I mean, not to any great extent, but we did talk about the fact that they were coming up and they were interested in being...
But informally. But informally, but not on agenda. So, that's the only thing that the public would have the ability to, to talk about and give that input to the, to, to the planning board, or, uh, you know, highway survey. I think that's important. One of the things I think we're all finding out is that there's different ways for us to begin, uh, communicating. We, we have a, a planner who is now available during the daytime, which is great, uh, because oftentimes we didn't have that in the past. And so, this whole dynamic has changed, uh, since you've come on board, and I think it's really healthy. But I do think it's also, you know, a way of trying to step our ability up to allow the public to have access to the decision-making that some of our boards are trying to make, so that they don't feel that they're doing it in a vacuum. And obviously, we have some expertise, uh, between yourself and, uh, Brian to give to the planning board so that then they can make that, you know, uh, initial decision, "Do we put it forward, uh, as a warrant article?" And then start that whole process of bringing the engineers out, uh, perhaps after getting some good advice, uh, from the highway surveyor and yourself. That's just a recommendation as an administrator. I think that's important.
We, we had a process previously that there was actually like a sign-off paper, and I don't know.
It's a checklist.
A checklist, and, and there was different departments, like, so our tax collector had to sign off saying there was no taxes or liens or things of that sort. There, there was the, um, public safety had to sign off saying that the roads were, you know, blah, 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 or, and the highway had to do theirs. And I can actually remember having the layout, the board of selectmen, having a, a meeting on the road layout. I don't know, and, and as I'm reading, it says it's based on the town bylaws and those things, but...
I didn't...
But that's, that's about twenty years ago.
Right. I did not have access to any of those documents until very recently. And there is a thing called a checklist town ways. Um, first of it's, the first section is layout, and then section two is acceptance and three is acquisition. Layout, and I read this over very recently.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm assuming, and we all know what happens when you assume, that all of that was done during the approval process and then when they started the road construction. I mean, we're at the tail end of this, so my inclination is that we're jumping in at the acceptance point. And, um, again, I did not have access to this document, so I was going under another process that I was very frequent, very knowledgeable of and very, um, versant in, and that's the one we use to know the town, whereas, you know, you start this whole process, they communicated to me that they wanted their roads accepted. I started the process, I got in touch with the on-call engineering, you know, we needed discrepancy inspection, which you have seen. Um, actually, I got them to fund the accounts to pay for those inspections first. Then we went out and did the on-call, you know, engineering inspection for discrepancies, and that's where we're at at this point in time. I mean, I started the rest of the procedure, assuming we would go forward because at that point, I didn't know any other, and you have deadlines and timelines and all this other stuff, so I had to start putting the public hearing notices in the newspaper and having those published so that, you know, we could go forward. So, um, anything can be halted at any point. I'm just proceeding forward until I'm told, "Hey, wait a minute, stop."
It sounds to me as if regardless, these things aren't gonna get done by me first.
Or done properly.
Done properly. And the other thing is, is that it sounds to me as if this, this whole process needs to be codified.
You know, in defense to the planning board, um, more than at least a half a dozen times last year, um, I went out with past town planner, with the planning board members. We, uh, took the police, uh, fire departments, UTV, a couple of times, um, between carriage one and two. None of, a lot of this cracking and sidewalks to, um, Hurtu Road and Albert Drive, I mean, they reported out to him by the planning board, not, not an engineering company. I mean, he knew about it. It was written down between the planning board, myself, and the past town planner, um, multiple times. Same thing with, um, Alfonso with Twin Pond Circle and Paulette. I was present for the paving last year, very happy with it. They started putting down mix, the mix wasn't coming through right with the engineers there, temperature, they ripped the mix up, they got rid of it, they came in with more mix, they didn't get out of there till like eight o'clock that night. But they had everybody present in sidewalks, you know, and all of that. There was a couple of drainage issues that were going on prior to it. Dominic Alfonso was in there fixing those along the curbing with myself and the engineering company that the town had at that time present, um, for his road work, retention ponds, we never went there, cause that was the next step. One of the next steps, and I, I hope it's on there for inspections, is I requested and require, I, I want to be present prior to all those drains being cleaned. You know, since my, um, term six years ago, we run into a lot of problems with drain manholes and catch basins with, with sediment in these new developments. And it's, it's only hurting us. So I, and Dominic already knows I wanna be present for that. He, last fall, he was pushing for the fall, but he wasn't gonna make it. Road-wise, I think he's pretty good, and I think the report says it. Drainage-wise, he hasn't, you know, I want the road swept, I want the drains cleaned, and I want the retention ponds inspected, well, you gotta report on that. That's good for me.
So Brian, that leads me into my next question I had, that do we oversee the work while it's being done, or do they inspect it after?
Since I've been here when allowed, um, first part of Albert Drive, which isn't on this, was being top coated, cause it was put in, construction work was done before me. I was there for the paving part of it. Wasn't there all day. I was in and out a half a dozen times. I took temperatures, the engineer had temperatures. Same thing happened with, um, Paulette Way and Twin Pond Circle. I was there, the engineer was there, we have been present. Like I said earlier, when Hurtu Road and the other part of Albert Drive, their top coat, nobody was present.
Sometimes in other towns, the on-call engineer actually sits out there while the work is being done to free up his time.
Yep.
You know, somebody's usually there.
I think it was Beals and Thomas.
Thomas?
They had it on, um, Paulette Way and Twin Pond Circle, the whole day.
Our on-call engineering contract with Beals and Thomas expired December of fourteen.
Cause I mean, some of these things, it looks like it could be done, but I think collectively may not be able to be done within the timeframe. And then, you know, I mean, there's, what was it, the streetlights?
The stuff with Alfonso, the detention basins, they need to get some kind of a backhoe back there.
Yeah.
That may be kind of, um, time prohibitive to get it back there, to get the, the land, um, leveled.
We wanna post this, this Friday?
Yeah, our... The, um...
The warrant.
The town, yeah, the warrant. So, basically, in the past, there's been times that we've left it on, and then at the meeting, planning board will, um, ask for it to be, to strike it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, last year, um, a selectman made the motion that it wasn't ready, we didn't, we didn't have anything, um, and just said, "We're taking it off." We didn't even have Brian's opinion last year. Brian wasn't even involved up to that point, so we had removed it. So it kinda puts us in that, that, you know, position.
With more knowledge, though. I, it, there's, there's extensive reasons why it should be removed, or why it could be removed legitimately.
Right.
Whether we wait till the twenty-fourth or not. I'm not, I don't know. I don't think it's gonna make a difference.
I'm going back to Alfonso.
Uh-huh.
You know, if he fixes his ponds and we go through the summer and into the fall town meeting, and goes for an inspection, everything comes out, you know, I wouldn't hesitate to put it on and not say go for a year, because his paving was done last year. We already went through this winter.
For him, it's his drainage.
Correct.
And retention.
Paving-wise, I agree that, you know, we need, we need it to sit through a winter.
Well, and Alfonso, um, truthfully, the roadwork he needs to do is mostly cosmetic. He needs to regroud the, the granite paving and things like that. That stuff is basically what you call cosmetic for a house. You know, that's easily handled. His issue is the drainage detention basins.
One question I have is, uh, it was one time, uh, fire suppression, water fire suppression issue with Alfonso, is that all in place?
Yeah, that's, I've got hydrants. Might not. That'd be a two, uh, question for the, might have.
Did they come in off Central Street, didn't they?
Yeah.
Across?
They came through, he bought a piece of land to come through, where he put another house.
Put another house, yeah. The, oh, the question I had, the planning board in their meeting? Have they seen this yet?
Um, they will.
Okay, so...
One member has because he's a developer, but, and I haven't, I keep forgetting to email it out to everybody else, but I will.
Okay. Cause my question is, is the planning board, have they committed on record within meeting, have they committed to saying, "We want everything fixed"?
Yeah, well, they did last week when we talked about it. I had told them about the inspections that had been done at the last planning board meeting, but we did not have this report as yet. And I gave them, you know, thumbnail sketch that this is some of the issues that came up, these are some of the problems. We need to know how much you wanna hold the feet to the fire as far as building these things exactly to what's on paper and been approved. And they all agreed, I mean, it wasn't an, I don't think it was an actual vote, it might have been a straw vote, um, that they did, that they felt that they should be built to specification, to the approved plans.
Can I just add also, uh, in one of the, um, recommendations from the, the on-call engineers is also with regards to streetlights and proposed streetlights that were specified on plans.
Mm-hmm.
And that were never actually, um, constructed or installed. So, one of the things that relates to, aside from, uh, highway surveyor would be, uh, public safety people, uh, with regards to wanting to make sure our streets are as well-lit as possible. So, when they do look at that, uh, and if they are really going to hold the developers' feet to the fire, I would really like to suggest that that be one piece that isn't taken away.
Well, a question for you is, does the town have a policy on streetlights? Because adding streetlights adds expense to the town.
The plan shows and locations for proposed streetlights, they have not been installed.
So, so the history of the streetlight in Millville. We had them everywhere.
Okay.
Everywhere. And then, um, I think our first executive secretary, Mr. Cohen, um, as a proposal, they went and they started shutting some off because of, so there was public safety...
The expense.
There was, yeah, so there was certain corners or certain locations that they deemed a public safety piece, and those were left on. And then, the, um, the homeowner could opt to pay for it in front. So as you go up Central Street, there's two white houses in front of the pond, one of those streetlights, if you look, hangs into the yard, because the person at the time was paying for it and said, "If I'm paying for the streetlight, I want it in my yard." And so if you look, there's one on the wrong side of the pole, because they were paying for it. So even though we have streetlights, people could opt to pay for that streetlight in front of their house.
What other towns have done is sometimes they have streetlights on the street, but there's a homeowners association that pays for those, which would be something, I don't know if you have a lot of homeowners associations in the newest subdivisions. The other option would be carriage lights at the end of each driveway.
The biggest problem you're gonna have in these new developments, it's all underground utilities. You're not gonna be able to put streetlights, if every homeowner wants it.
Well, no, you'd put them so...
No, but there wouldn't have been...
Or you could put them at intersections and...
But I think the question is...
Handicap ramps, yes, I agree with that, but...
But I think the question is, is the plans...
Why were they...
The plans has the poles, but there is no poles.
If they had no intention to put them.
Going forward, would the selectmen be interested in adapting, adopting some kind of a policy of either having them put into a homeowners association or adopting the idea of just having carriage lights at the end of each driveway?
I think that's a, a bigger discussion. I think it's the, the road.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? There's, there's a section on Albert that I think definitely, um, is it Al, yeah, Albert, as you go up, there is, you know, that corner around the back. You would definitely want something there, so no one ends up down in the bank. Or as you come up top, there it goes to the dead end and then it goes out. So, you know, it's like a fork, so you would need something there. So, I don't, I mean, I can't say tonight, "Just go this way or go that way," but I think it's worthy of discussion.
Well, that's my point.
And what the planning board and what the public safety and, but I think, I think the point, though, is that the plan was approved with certain items.
Right.
And if that's our approved plan, then...
But the other problem is, and I, I, I know it firsthand, with these developments, there's a lot of, um, "We'll do this for you, but can we get rid of fire hydrants?" Going through these developments. "We'll take off a shut-off on every hydrant, but we're gonna loop the hydrant system up Quaker Street and repay Quaker Street for you and push shut-offs, so you can shut off the development." That was approved. It's on the plan that every hydrant should have a shut-off, but it was approved, and I, I believe now you'll be the third planner that's involved with this one develop. Streetlights, I believe there was something on there, because I know Dominic with his first phase had, had the same issue. They, they, they give a little, they, they took a little. Same thing happened with slanted, slant, um, slanted granite curbing versus vertical granite curbing, um, with the sidewalk being against the curb to being away from it. You know, we'll allow you to do, they made concessions, even though it was on the plan, I feel, you know, for these developments, it's gonna, it's gonna be, it's not fair, because you're going through this third planner and probably third or fourth engineering firm, and now you're gonna go back to the original plan and say, I mean, you're gonna start digging up all these roads for fire hydrants, I'll tell you that right now. I had nothing to do with it.
Right.
But I know firsthand, this stuff was, there was concessions made.
Well, maybe there needs to be some type of law...
And it wasn't just with fire hydrants.
You know what I mean? Some type of documentation of these concessions and votes.
The sidewalks, and I saw the width of the sidewalk.
To go with those.
And the slant, slant curbing versus vertical, because vertical curbing is, it's a lot more durable, but it's a lot more money.
Right.
And so they let them put the slant curbing. Alfonso put their sidewalk with a three-foot grass strip.
Right.
Up in Albert and Hurtu, they let them butt the granite curbing. There was concessions made, "You do this, we'll do this." And I think some of that, those concessions were also made, and that's how Thunder Road went away, and they came to a concession to attach them, cause they're two separate developers.
Right.
And the town said, "Well, you're gonna have roads attached, and you're not gonna have the road split names in between."
So is there some formality with the concessions or is this, because I think that's a little...
On documentation?
I think going forward, I, I think that's important there, because he said, she said, it's just a simple...
But how are you gonna go back on these developers? I don't find it fair.
Well, I'm not, nobody's saying that it is. If there is some history that we should be able to explore, or institutional knowledge is important too. But we did have a planner or two planners before, so there has to be some kind of, you know, iteration.
There are revised, revised plans for Carriage One.
Okay.
And from a planning standpoint, standpoint, looping Albert into Hurtu is a better model, because that way you have two exits versus having all these dead ends all over the place. So from a standing, from a planning standpoint, it's, it's a smarter thing to do. How that happened, or how that transpired, I'm not sure. I do know there's revised plans that do show that Thunder became the back end of Hurtu, of Albert. So I'm sure some of these changes made it to the revised plans, but how that actually happened, I'm not really sure. As for, um, Alfonso, uh, how those concessions were made there, I don't know. I mean, I can try to do some research, but it's gonna be a lot of digging.
Yeah, I know.
And I'm not sure, you know, how fruitful it will be.
Right.
So there, the, the... So, there, the, just to recap, the planning board says that they are going to ask for all of these things to be done.
Yep.
Or they will not support it.
It's my understanding.
And Brian, you have seen all of these things, and you are concerned with both? Or just one development being able?
No, I'm concerned with the whole report. I have not physically seen Alfonso's ponds.
Okay.
You know, his road and everything, I've combed that over.
The ponds work, but they're not built to specifications. I mean, they do function, they're not holding water, which they're not supposed to do. All the groundwater has recharged back in, but they're uneven, the swell wall has been deteriorated, and, you know, and the riprap that's supposed to be in there is not in there. You know, the drain covers.
Just for clarification, you're saying you're concerned with the report or what the report says?
I have concerns with what the report says.
Yeah.
I, I'm not their professional opinion, I'm gonna take it. I wanna see that cleared up before, you know, anything moves forward, so neither of these.
So, if everything was to be done, everything gets done before a town meeting?
In the next two weeks.
Which you doubt, right? Which, you're.
I wouldn't pass it by Alfonso. I really wouldn't, but.
No, I, yeah.
So, that was my thought, too.
Do you feel that the town should accept, or do you think a six-month period of these corrections and then a vote?
I think they should, they should go to the fall.
Minimally?
Minimum, go to the fall.
Both of them?
Yes.
At least, at least for the catch, the protection ponds at Alfonso.
And I'm not saying, and I'm not, I want it to be stated, go to the fall and not be fixed two weeks before the fall town meeting.
Right. No, because you need, you need, you need that time to see how, a heavy rainstorm, you need to see how it's going to react.
Well, it's not unusual to have your, you know, annual town meeting, spring town meeting, we've talked about this. Be very focused on financial issues and, you know, and in some ways, roads become financial issues for towns. However, I think there's an awful lot of questions in it, and one of the reasons I asked Hillary to come here is because she was good enough to put them forward as consideration, as warrant articles, but the more that we were delving into the process, the more I became convinced that it was important for the board to also have this consideration, since we're going forward with a warrant that has to be posted. And rather than, I think, pushing the envelope potentially too hard and fast, I think it's not at all a problem to be considerate of a timetable that works well for both you, for Brian, for the planning board, and also for the developers to be able to do things in a way that, at the end of the day, everybody's on the same page and we can unanimously support. It's just, it's a nightmare for so many communities that take roads before they're ready. And, you know, with, with us facing our operating deficit and with, you know, our highway department having the lack of resources that most highway departments get on an annual basis, that would be another concern, whether it's, you know, something that is mentioned in this report or something that gets identified, even with the expertise of our highway surveyor or chief or yourself. So, I think it's, it's important, because you're taking those steps, but I think the next piece of it is whether the board thinks that that's prudent to put before the people and to try to, you know, put a lot of energy into that, only to just pull it at the last second. And we don't like to do that with, I don't like to do that with town meeting articles. They're either really ready or they're not.
And I know sometimes the motivating factor is they want it approved because winter's coming, and they don't wanna, and they don't wanna plow. But we're not in that situation, we're, we're not. November, we will be.
Now, in November, we will be, right.
So, I mean.
Which is all the more reason to get the work done now and not push it off.
So, I feel.
Right. Hopefully, they'll stay focused.
I feel like I do not wanna step on the planning board's toes.
Yeah.
As has previously occurred, but I also feel that we're in the very same situation as we were last, and I, and this is not.
It's no fault of the planning board whatsoever.
No, no, I mean, because.
This work has been fabulous.
It's, you know what, when the work comes to you, the work comes to you. When things are ready, then it's a timetable.
Right.
And I don't wanna be at the eleventh hour trying to push something through and not really feel. Like, I hate making a decision when someone asks me, "I want, I want 24 hours, I wanna think about it, I wanna get it all in," and.
Well, this is a big one, too.
And it is. And I know the, like I said, the motivating factor is usually plowing, where that's not the issue. I'd like to see them get it done, so we can have the six months and see what, see what the fall brings for us.
It's about time we start doing things right, going forward, okay?
Yeah, and I, and you know what, when I read this today, I was like, "Oh, leave it on and let them strike it." But now I'm, I'm listening, and I'm listening, and I'm like, maybe leaving it on isn't the right thing. You know, maybe the stance is that it's not ready, we don't have a final report signed off saying it's good to go.
Right.
And we have to sign that warrant tonight.
Right.
And this is the information that we have. It's just, it's just hard, because you know that the planning board is working hard.
I'll entertain the motion to strike.
Well, I think we're gonna, are we doing the, the warrant?
Yeah.
Under new business, so we'll have to bring it up then.
Okay.
But I will say, right, I did not walk in here thinking I was gonna strike it, but as I sit here, I feel, I feel that way. You know, having Brian's input, hearing some more of this, hearing some of the past history of the larger crack, cosmetic versus drainage versus, you know, top coat. I mean, now it, you know, now I'm, I'm getting a clearer picture of it.
Well, both of them need to go out and do work. I mean, I don't think those retention basins at Alfonso have been touched in 15 years. I mean, that's their fault. I mean, we just discovered it. I mean, and, and I told them upfront, "I'm gonna send an engineer out and give us a deficiency report." You know, so they knew it was coming, with the fact that they didn't do anything about it, you know, and they assumed that they were gonna fly.
And all the ones on the top were pumped when the main road got accepted, because at the time, the highway surveyor had them pump, clean out all the catch basins.
All of them.
And then the one out on Providence Street, which is closer to where I live, because they had to put that in because of the runoff coming off of, out of the development. So, they said, "You need to do that one, too, because that's part of it." So, I can remember that one being done. So, the main ones were done, I mean, now they get done through ours, what, every two years?
Every year.
Every year. But, like you said, the ones in the back.
Yeah.
How many years of, and, and that's, that's a slope.
Well, and also, it showed carelessness with the fact that they put a drain cover out there. It's supposed to say drain, and it says sewer.
It makes us feel fancy in Millville.
It's an easy fix, but I mean, it's just another attention to detail that they weren't attending to. Are you just slapping any old cover?
Right.
Aside, aside from the expense we're gonna incur from accepting these, with cleaning the storm drains annually, street sweeping, snow plowing, cleaning the retention basins once they're accepted. I want nothing but to accept these, because I probably hear from these residents more than anybody sitting here.
Right.
They can't understand why we don't plow a sandy road. Why is Alfonso Way down to the asphalt and our road hasn't been done? I've sent pictures at six o'clock in the morning. "I can't get out and go to work, do you have a medical emergency?" "Nope, I can't help you."
Right.
I mean, it's, it's, I feel, I feel for the people. I wanna maintain the roads, because then, you know, the people paying the taxes are getting what they're paying for.
I send letters out in the fall, telling.
Oh, I know, I know you do, and same thing happened up on Albert, Carriage One and Two.
Yes.
You brought up Brown Bear Circle, and that's another story for another day.
But that gives also another reason to be cautious and to do a real thorough examination of everything that is being done. So, you know, an additional five months, I think, just make sure that this town is doing it the right way and making sure that we're not gonna, you know, encounter additional burden or questions of having not done the right thing. And I think that, I think we owe that to the people. And I think with both of your combined efforts, along with our public safety and the planning board and this board, I think we can get it right, and I think, you know, it'll be a really good thing in the end, but it has to be done right. And it, we're not talking about one road, you know, we're talking about all the, yeah. So, that's a huge thing for this town to swallow all at once without having it done really its diligence in the process.
That was the reason why I put those public hearing notices after the, of course.
And that's, that's done right prior to November.
Right.
Just, you know, we don't wanna be sitting here again in November making these same decisions, 'cause we're two weeks away from the meeting and it's not done. Because then we're still gonna wanna see what it's like in another seven months to see what, what the outcome is. So, I don't think any of us are in any way saying, "In five months, we'll be all set." I think it's.
It needs to be all set before we can.
Before we can make a decision.
Let's say by October first.
I'd still like June first.
Yeah, right.
Then they lose their motivation, I'll work, I'll work on it.
You can just say there's one main, main member.
And Hurtu Road and the piece of Albert, those, I know they have, has the cracking issues and their own separate issues, but they do have a top coat. There might be no reason why those couldn't go in the fall and leave Ronnet off, and let that get topped and sit through winter again. And, you know, I wanna see these accepted, so, you know, if they get working on it.
Well, I do propose them as three separate articles for just that reason.
Really?
That's good, thank you.
I mean, how Alfonso could have done, and these two have sitting there. Just coming up now.
Right.
I'd just like to thank you, Hillary, for, for these reports and the hard work of the planning board, and Brian for your input as well.
Well, thank you.
It helped make the decision easier for me tonight as to what, what direction I feel comfortable in going.
I will prob, you're welcome, please come to the planning board meetings, the public hearings.
I've got it on my calendar.
But they'll probably maybe cancel at the, at that time, but it would be nice if you all came and explained, 'cause I'm, I'm hoping the engineers and the developers will be there at the time, so they'll hear this firsthand.
I put it in, if I'm coming in from somewhere, I have a, I get done at seven, so I'll be back in town by 20 after, so hopefully I can. I've got it in my planner, so I'll.
Thank you.
It's my one Monday night off. I get one Monday night off, so I'll.
Again, that's.
Pop in.
On April 24th.
Correct. That would be this coming Monday.
In this building.
In this building.
Public hearings start at 7:15?
Um, 7:20, I believe.
7:20.
Might be, no, you're right.
I think it's 7:15.
7:15.
Those are for the two warrant articles, 7:15, 7:20, 7:30, and then 7:40. I tried to put them close together.
I thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Malali wants to talk about construction updates.
You're free.
All yours, Brian.
Thanks. Just an update on things that have been going on and work that is coming to light. First, I guess I'll start with, the street sweeping is ongoing as we have started with all our sidewalks and parking lot edges. The heavy sweeping was scheduled to start today, but is starting tomorrow morning at 7:00 a.m. on Central Street. So, that'll be ongoing for the next probably two weeks throughout the whole town. And right after that, we're going to be moving into, I got dates for work on Lake Street, which is going to commence on May 4th, the week of. That should only be a two to three-day project, if they run into anything.
Repaving?
Repaving, leveling, keyway cutting, very light drainage repair, leveling of the whole street and top coating. All driveways will be keyway cut or bermed if need be, if they're running downhill. That should only take a few days. And then, the date I got for Ironstone Street now is starting on May 8th, weather permitting and everything else from the contract, outside contractors, that is going to be done through Chapter 90. I know I came to the board last October, and we were gonna try to push through to get it done. A lot of different things happened, and it didn't come to light, but this time it's going. The road has already been mocked, DigSafe, underground phone service from Verizon, they have some underground utilities there. All the drain structures will be rebuilt and brought to new grade. The road is gonna be totally pulverized, regraded, binder coat, new berm on the right side, and sidewalk on the right side. From Central Street all the way to the X-Bridge Town Line.
A sidewalk doesn't currently go all the way, right?
No, it actually.
Stops it.
Correct, it stops.
This is squish.
Two, two houses before the town line.
Is that where it's stopping?
That's where it's stopping.
Okay.
It is not, we're not.
I didn't know if we were.
Nope.
Okay.
We haven't gone that far.
No, that's okay, when you, I just wanted to make sure.
We're going to initiate sending out letters to the town residents, talking to the police chief. When we're working within Central Street and the intersection of West, we'll be detouring the traffic, unless it's local entirely. We're gonna send letters to the school, to the bus company, to notify them of the work that's gonna be taking place. Obviously, the buses will be able to.
They do have a loop that go, the elementary.
The buses will be able to go through, we're gonna call it local traffic only. And those, they will be part of it.
Another detour.
Hopefully, only for about a week and a half.
Is that how long the project?
Yeah. If all goes well. And the other project we have in the Horizon that everyone knows about is Central Street. I believe we just confirmed a meeting for the 25th. Hopefully, we can get some more insight on that, where it's heading, and get some plans in front of us and see what's, what's going on with that. Get, I guess, public hearings for that.
Eventually, yeah.
Will be coming.
It's the beginning.
This is the beginning.
Yeah.
But we have another, another meeting with TEC, which has been right on top of it.
We, just, I can add to that, I recently had a conference call with the state coordinator, Jackie Fratato, and we were having to update her. And at that time, we had, you know, just like 15 to 20 percent, that's what I had heard for design phase, but all the other aspects that needed to be done preliminarily were done. So, I'm sure he has more to add to that, because that was an update that I had prior to that. So, I know that TEC Engineering works very quickly, and they always have their ducks in a row. So, I'm looking forward to seeing where we're at. And it sounded to me like they were really eager to meet with us, to go over the complete streets as well as the Central Street project.
The Mass Works project is scheduled to be done by eight?
2018, yeah. They ask us to extend out the timeline, even though TEC Engineering, you know, and also Brian and myself, we all feel very hopeful that we can keep it on budget and, you know, within the timeframe. And if we do that, there can be some bonuses, and sometimes the bonus is, you know, to be able to extend something a little bit further. And we committed to the state coordinator that Millville was gonna be put on the map for being as diligent as possible in moving that grant forward, because if we can prove to the Commonwealth that we're working as hard as we can, then it may have some additional benefit. I mean, a million dollars is a huge benefit for us, but who's to not say that we can't be a shining example? And they do, you know, one of the things they wanted to see is projects that were completed in those timeframes. They didn't want something that was gonna be on, you know, the docket for years and years, so. So, we have a very committed highway surveyor, and I know that he gets many calls from me to, to, to keep on things, and he does a great job, so we're working good as a team.
Looking pretty good, Brian.
I have one question.
Sure.
You mentioned Lake Street. What are you going to do on Lake Street?
That's going to be a little, little bit of drainage work, but most of that is shim leveling and top coating. Keyways, normal overlay of a road.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yes, that's the road. It goes through the road.
Yeah.
Yes. I had given a list last year at the town meeting of streets that are in need of work. And now we're going through with the prioritizing of what those streets are. Obviously, there's never enough funds to just go out and do it all. So people don't, you know, they have a hard time understanding that, you know, we put up, that we're going to, we put a plan together to do X, Y, Z streets, but a lot of people thought their street was going to be the first street done. You know, we, we at Millville only received, I believe we just got getting it again from Chapter 90. Hundred and $2,000. Hundred thousand dollars does not go a long way. I mean.
It goes far as it did 60 years ago.
No. So, it, it's hard to do a complete project and do it right, you know. Ironstone Street is getting done the right way. One, because it needs it. Two, because we've saved our little bit of our piggy bank for a little while because the money doesn't go away to build up, to be able to spend, you know, $200,000 to get the street done.
One other thing, I think it would be important for the board to know that, once again, you're going to try to enter into doing the collaboration with the town of Bellingham to put out for the bids because we were able to get good competitive pricing on that, which allows us to do more in some of these.
Those bids are out.
Nice.
Because we went in with Hope Dale, Bellingham, Blackstone and Millville.
Same as all?
Uh, no, for roadwork, Chapter 90. Actually, any roadwork that we want to do. We can get, you know, better pricing from, and Bellingham does a fabulous job putting it together. They break it down to where we can pick and choose every little contractor that we want because they, they spend the time. And it's a little confusing to figure out. I still don't understand the whole format, but when you don't, they sit down and they explain it to you because they do and they know it. We get better pricing, make our money go further.
That should be a plus in that community compact, regionalization.
Yeah, well, Don DiMartino for years has been really the, the, the area legend for DPW Engineering. And one of the things, even when I was speaking with your board, you want to have people who start to look at how to put projects forward even when there isn't any money. How do you chip away by getting plans together and lining up, you know, the, the, the construction people who are really good and then make them very aware that, you know, you can go in and do this collaborative kind of work. And sometimes that will put you right on the, you know, front list when the money does become available. And I think Brian is learning that with what we're doing here with trying to apply in advance and making those connections and trying to, to work with other communities. And we can get more done with, with less money, but with a higher quality of construction available to us. So hopefully, we can keep moving that forward. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Next is the, the National Agenda's Mass Rehabilitation Commission Home Modification Loan Program.
Public forum.
Public forum, I'm sorry.
Tim?
Nothing. I'll get me so sad.
Just checking.
All right, now the correspondence.
Correspondence Mass Rehabilitation Home Modification Loan Program. Mrs. Kell.
Sure. I put this in your packet because one of the things that I think is important is that anytime you can offer local residents an opportunity to, to have those individuals who are faced with physical challenges and disabilities, if you can provide them with resources that are really readily available, the home modification program actually is one of the programs that has money in it. And most people don't actually take advantage of it. And one of the things that they're doing currently at the state level is trying to get the word out. And this particular program allows people within specific household incomes that provides them with very low interest loans, up to $30,000, to actually make their homes more accessible with modifications, especially when people have people who've become recently disabled and they need to have wheelchair access and they need to have, you know, improvements made to the home, whether it's widening a doorway or making modifications at waste level. There are things that cost money and most people don't have that. But this offers people the ability to do that. So, I am posting this on the website, but I also wanted the public to be aware that in addition to it being on the website, we have some nice brochures as well. So, I would like to encourage anybody who has that question, can certainly get in touch with me or go to the website.
Can we put a, a synopsis, like maybe for cable and then maybe some information here at the senior center? Or the Sunshine, the people who come in for the Sunshine? You know, they might, I'm sure they already know about it, but I think sometimes just getting that information out there. I used this about four years ago.
The resident would go about getting access to this would be through, the focal point being something like the senior center?
Oh, you can. You can do that and make them aware of that the, the actual online procedure goes through the CDAC program. We can do that. I can talk with, I'll talk with Jill tomorrow, the senior center director, and make sure that she's also aware.
A lot of times people reach out to the senior center, you know, for that walker, for that, you know, the wheelchair, for, you know, when, or you, or they hear about their neighbor who's facing some hard times. Sometimes that gets that information out.
So, I put that in there. I thought it was, especially because I know that they're really pushing it. They want to get people to access that grant program. The second thing I had put in your packet was the Department of Environmental Protection sent us a notice. Once again, that they're offering the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Municipal Grant Application. And this really, again, is for recycling, composting, reuse, waste reduction activities. There is a June 14th deadline, but I thought I would put a call out to the community. There are, sometimes we have individuals who have different initiatives. Last year, we had Parks and Recreation come about a garden initiative. Then we might have some other people in the community that really would like to see some other waste reduction activities, composting and the like. So, even school recycling assistance. So, I thought I would put it out there. It was still with ample time. And if the board has some ideas, I have some ideas, but I, I wanted to put it out to the public because sometimes they have better ideas about things and maybe we can offer some collaboration with that. We already talked about Chapter 90, just so that the public is aware, that we were hoping for more Chapter 90 money this year. But again, it's pretty much level funded from last year, about 200 million. The MMA, the Mass Municipal Association, along with our board, was hoping for at least 300 million because we feel our roads are underfunded. And once again, this is a 10-year Chapter 90 contract renewal, so to speak. But this year, fiscal year 2018, it is slated to be 102,422 dollars and just a little bit less than last year because we were at 103,000.
Sounds to me like it's a formula.
There you go. Sounds like we have to just ratchet the formula a little bit. I don't disagree with that. Put another zero at the end to that would be happy. So, the next thing I have is TEC Associates. This is not to be confused with TEC Engineering. This is about the PNW, PNW Railroad's 2017 Vegetation Control Program. I know that when we had the power lines, anytime there's applications of herbicides, there's quite a bit of notification that comes through, both through the Department of Agriculture and through the Mass Department of Environmental Protection. And this is just to notify the community that they will be doing the herbicide applications along the railroad ways. It's called the Vegetation Management Plan. And what I would like to do, if the board would like me, is, once again, to put it under the Board of Health website page and also on, online so that the community is aware of when that's going to take place. The, the cycle is usually within May, June and, May and June for Providence and Worcester Railroad. So, that's a May 30th through June 12th.
So, do they come in for a, a public hearing? Because didn't we have a public hearing when they did the, the power lines? Because I remember some of the, the residents coming down because they were talking about the hum of the, the lines and the this and the that and how much they were going to cut. I didn't know if it's the same.
Recently, we just renewed that agreement with the power company.
With the power?
National agreement.
I just didn't know.
Well, it looks like there's a public review period in which I think that the PNW Railroad, there's that rights of way aspect before they put application of herbicides. And they, from what I can tell, is that they have a 21-day period, comment period in which you can add your input to that. And that looks like it closes on May 19th. And we can put that also if the, the public wants to make a comment about that. Usually, the, the railroads themselves tend to have quite a bit of leniency because it goes way back with the federal government. There's a lot of things that don't, that don't really apply to them, you know, whether it's a road, what is it, bridge construction? There's, it's pretty amazing that they have a green light for a lot of things that other transportation or institutions, government, original government transportation institutions don't necessarily have, but.
Maybe because the power company has easements, where these are on easements.
Looks like we have five sensitive areas.
Yes, with the map on the back.
The public drinking water. So, you got the library, St. Augustine's, St. Potbelly. Looks like Polish-American Club and the elementary school.
And are there any others that needed to be added that we should include during that comment period?
Well, if they have, oh, that may be George's or the post office. I was going to say, because George makes his own ice. So, I don't, I have to see. I know they just added Potbelly because they said that was the only new one they added to their list.
Well, one of the things that I think, they give an appendix of the types of potential herbicides that they would apply. And, you know, one of the things that I would like to hope is that, and I haven't done any real investigation of the particular type of products, other than if you look at the active ingredients, I think a lot of them have tried to become more environmentally conscious. The reason why I felt it was important to bring it to the board is because we do have issues in the town already with something completely different that isn't necessarily because of an herbicide application. But I think it'll be important to apply on the, to put on our website and also potentially, if there were any other questions, I would be more than happy to contact the TEC Associates and make sure that we can get those questions addressed.
New business.
Do you miss it?
Yeah.
Oh, A added it just as a correspondence. It wasn't, that came in today and I just wanted you to have it, not as a, a matter of the agenda. But if you want, I can, I can explain it. The, I put that on the side. It is a correspondence that came in today from Norfolk Aggie. I know that some of the board members, I had mentioned individually that if they've been paying attention to the budget deliberations, that each year we get information from each of the schools about potentials for increases in their tuitions and/or the number of students potentially that could be attended. And we had been notified, I had actually called them and had been notified that the tuition was not going to change going to Norfolk Aggie. And it looked as if we weren't going to be changing the number of students. So, from a financial perspective, that's a good thing for us.
So, all we have to hear from is Tri County now?
Right. In Tri County, I did hear in terms of not so much the tuition, but in terms of students. And we do have a potential, if they're accepted, and they have until the 1st of July, I think, to make that determination that we do, there are two potential applicants for incoming students. And whether both of them get accepted or not will actually have a huge impact on our budget because we would hit between the two schools an eight per person threshold for transportation, in which case then we would either have to go to a full bus or get another particular vehicle because you can't go beyond that eight for the minibus type thing. But I'll be talking with Valley Transportation about that and see what we may be able to speak to them about. And also potentially look at some other collaborative efforts that we might be able to do. But I'm holding hope that maybe that doesn't happen. So, that's why I didn't put it initially on the agenda, but wanted you just to have it. Okay.
Beamer.
This is in your packet because I had received a telephone call from the superintendent about the preliminary certified budget that was done, adopted by the school committee back in March. There was apparently, as they were going to print, the superintendent had detected an error in terms of the calculations. And so, before you, you have the most recent rendition of, of the budget that is being put forth by the school.
The colored one also?
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I have the non-colored one.
No, that's fine.
And unfortunately, it was a calculation that, for some reason, and I, I was still waiting to see where the error was made. The superintendent was good enough to stop by at the police station to inform me that this error had been made, but it was close to a $100,000 difference. And unfortunately, the calculation was to the, our budget, not Blackstone's budget. So, what that meant is that the overall supplemental investment asked by the school is gone up to 321,783 dollars. There has been a lot of discussion with our finance committee. We met last evening. Once again, we're meeting again this Thursday. We're meeting also again next Monday. And what we're hoping to do, I think, next Monday is to, once again, outline where we're at as a community and looking at our overall budget operational deficit. We had the other numbers plugged in. And I think we had a strategy that was formulated to try to address that ask for supplemental investment in the increases the school had in a shared sacrifice, if you want to say, a shared manner. And I think there's still some major questions about this increase. We don't have all the answers. We're hoping to get more and so that we can continue to make informed decisions. But regardless, I will, you know, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn and the chairman has attended the last night's meeting. And I think on your agenda here, we had the joint meeting. I, I thought it would give this board an opportunity to talk about its recent joint meeting last week with the finance committee. But as far as the school goes, this is something that not all of the community might have been aware of. And because the school board has its own meetings, I think it's important that, as we were going forward, alert the public that their, their, whatever that was adopted by their preliminary certified budget, it has changed. And now we're trying to address that.
Thursday's meeting, representatives from the school.
I think they're planning for Monday for that. Monday.
Have, have we received a line item budget from them yet?
No, I, I did ask the superintendent for that. I know that our accountant has also, we wanted a better breakdown so that we could take a look at that. And I do know that the.
And then I was told that that would probably be forthcoming, at least by Monday. And I think since that time, there's been some email correspondence that the superintendent might want to meet with our accountant and myself to kind of go over that. You know, I have confidence in our accountant to be able to look at just numbers and figures. So I'm, I'm still, you know, would like to request that. I think it's going to be important for the finance committee. I did get the feeling that they still want to, you know, everybody wants to work collaboratively. I, for one, want to be able to make sure that, no matter how we're coming to grips with closing almost a $500,000 operating deficit, we need to just make sure we have confidence in our numbers, they have confidence in their numbers. And that way, we can actually, you know, go to the public and make sure that they are aware that there has been a lot of open dialogue between the school and the town and that we feel very confident in the figures and also confident in the strategy of how to close this gap. Because I can tell you, since that time, and I think I'll reserve the comments for the next item on the agenda, that there's been an awful lot of strategy on our part on trying to close that budget deficit before we finalize our actual budget for the townspeople to adopt.
In the past, the school always sent the town the line item budget. And we kept it in the town hall for, if someone wanted to come in and look at it. It didn't leave, but anyone had access to it. So that has been past practice because I know I've looked through it. Joe, you've looked through it. I think you made a copy when you, and took it home with you. But, so I think, I mean, I think we need to have a copy of their line item budget. We've always had it.
I don't see how we can't go any further without one. This is pretty vague, I think.
Well, I think our finance team is, is going to be reaching out to our school board members once again. We'll try to, you know, see if we can get better clarity. And also, I think they need to know, from our perspective, we have a much better handle on what our numbers are and what our real, you know, conservative estimates are for our ability to close that. And, you know, we're hoping that we're going to be able to do that using a shared approach. And, you know, we need to have that confidence in those numbers as well. So I think, I think that by next Monday, we should have a better idea. And I put a lot of confidence in our team because, like I said, we're meeting very frequently, including on holidays, to make sure that we put forward the best plan for the town and take into consideration all the areas that are actually having to make hard choices with very limited means. And we've already had a previous joint meeting with the school officials, and I thought that was very healthy. It opened up a lot of dialogue, but that was the beginning of what needs to be done on a more ongoing basis. And we'll continue that next Monday.
Thanks.
Unless you wanted to actually talk about, you know, your joint meeting last week with the finance board. I know that three members, Andrew, Thomas, and also yourself, were able to attend. Is there anything you wanted to add to that? Anybody? Okay. All right. Okay. Then onwards to the town warrant. You should have in front of you this evening a copy of, a draft copy, which we're hoping doesn't need any major revisions, but it actually has a total of 17 articles. One of the things I will tell you is I put this warrant together with both our financial team and also our legal team. One of the things I wanted to do is look at at least the last two years' worth of warrants because there has been a change in our accountant times three now. And one of the things I wanted to make sure is that if we have articles specific to the warrant, that they're really necessary and, and that we're following not just tradition, but following the law for what we really need to put on there. And if something doesn't really need to be on there, why do we have it on there, even if it was past tradition? So if you look at it, I don't know if you want to go through each one of them. Article one looks, and we did, by the way, let me step back for a second. We did meet with the town moderator today. And I had gotten word late from legal counsel after looking at each of the individual articles, putting them together, had another go-around with them this afternoon. So by late this afternoon, we had met with our moderator. And as you know, in the past, he has voiced wanting to make sure he had an opportunity to meet with us. Since coming into the position, I had committed to do that. And it was a very healthy meeting. He did make some recommendation that, at town meeting, that he would like to take these routine articles. As you know, one of the things I suggested that the board embrace, and I'm very happy that they did, was instead of having us in early 6:30 special town meeting and then having an annual town meeting, just to have one town meeting and take care of those routine things that used to be done in a special town meeting and combine them. In which case, this will be our first time doing that. So what we tried to do is front-load the warrant with those routine articles that traditionally were done in a special town meeting. And of course, Article one has that policy objective that we would like the town meeting to vote and approve. And that is that if you're going to make any amendments increasing any monetary articles, that you would actually stipulate where that money would come from. And that is, you know, a prudent type of measure to make sure that we don't just have people embracing change without knowing where they're going to take that money from if they're going to make some kind of recommendation. I know the moderator feels strongly about that. I do, too. I've always embraced it as a policymaker. I think it's great. So that's the first article. The second article has to do with bills of prior fiscal year. I thought we only had one. I did try to get our accountant to...
Can I interject?
Sure.
The, we are asked tonight to give our recommendations on these so that they can be in here and posted? Yes?
I will leave that up to, to the board.
We usually, in the past, we've usually done that. We want to, just procedurally, because I've, we've done this, but it's new to Tom and Andrew and yourself.
Sure.
We have gone through and we've held them.
Okay.
Certain ones. So if we had a question, and then we do one vote on...
The whole thing.
The thing. On, you know, it might be one through eight, and then 11 and 15 and whatever. And so that would be kind of a clear-cut unanimous vote. And then we'd go back and discuss any specific ones that needs more clarification, that might have a descending vote. And then we vote on those individually so that we can see what the, the recommendation is, a three-one or whatever the vote comes down to be. I don't know what's the...
So in the past, we've read them?
Mm-hmm. So do we want to just hold the ones that we, we think may have descending votes or need more clarification on as we're going through right now?
I would, I don't think we need an article on it.
No, that's why, before we get too deep in it, that's why I wanted to ask now. So, so we'll just do a blanket for those that seem unanimous. And then we'll hold so any member during discussion can hold an article so that we can vote on that separately. Does that sound appropriate?
Would you like to read each one?
No, don't read them. We have to live through a meeting, being read. No, I think...
Okay, Article one.
Monetary increases.
Monetary increases.
So anyone?
You okay with that one?
I am.
Actually, I had a question. Does that just apply to, let's say, like a citizen coming up at a town meeting and asking to increase something or for everything?
Yeah.
So anybody who gets up at a town meeting, say they want, and I don't want to throw any department under the bus, so highway, right?
Except, yeah.
Except for, except for, right. Highway wants, he wants $10,000 and the finance committee has said no, and the board of selectmen have said no. So he gets up and he says, "I'm going to take $10,000." And in the past, we would, they would vote and adjust it. Well, what happened is, you're not saying where that $10,000 came from. So literally, what was happening is, on the stage, at that moment, finance committee was trying to figure out where they were going to get that money from. Now, when he comes up and says, "I want $10,000 and I'm taking it out of legal counsel fees," he has to show where that money's being, where it's coming from. Before, people would just get their extra money and then it would fall on the shoulders of finance and selectmen to figure out who they were going to cut. Now it's up to the person asking for the money to say the exact place that they're taking the money to transfer it to.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Yep.
Article two, bills of prior fiscal year. I think we're okay on that one. Article three, snow and ice deficit. Questions? We okay? Highway Department, Chapter 90.
Did I have something?
Snow and ice deficit?
No. Are you using the one that I placed in your packet? This is the new one.
I'm good.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Article four, Highway Department, Chapter 90. Good? Article five, cable license fees. Good?
Yes.
Yep.
Article six, fund other post-employment benefits, OPEB. Good?
I'm good.
Article seven, revolving funds.
Yes, can I just add?
On that?
Yeah. Well, I'll put a hold because I do want to discuss it afterwards, if you want. I mean, or I can give you the discussion now, while we hold. And then I'll give the discussion afterwards.
So I'll put a hold. Article eight, fund, fund the capital budget.
Do they have a number on what that may be?
No, I would put a hold in. I'll explain why. We're just doing it as a, as a placeholder between now and, before we post.
Stabilization fund, Article nine. Article 10, fiscal year 2018 budget.
No hold.
No hold, yes. Article 11, accessory of language. Article 12, temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana. I think that's pretty well understood. Lot of frugish. Article, here we go now. Article 13, street acceptance, pollack way.
Make a motion to strike this article.
I hear a second.
A second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think, personally, I think we should wait for the planning board to do this. Just my opinion, you know. Let them strike it if they want to.
Did you vote, Joe?
Yea.
So three, one.
You know, we can get in trouble with the planning board, but, well, no, I'm just, you know, I don't know.
No, you know what? And I, and we had a lengthy discussion earlier. And it, like I said, this has been a go-around, but I think, I think the conversation earlier has given me the, the confidence to know that even if it's done in the next two weeks, it's still not giving us enough time to see it. And that's, that's the confidence I'm using in, when I assert my vote. So, and I, I can appreciate yours, too, because I was, last year, I was the same way. I was like, oh, well, we should let them. But we're kind of in the same boat again, so.
Article 14, street acceptance, twin pawn circle.
Make a motion to strike the article.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three to one. Article 15, street acceptance, her two road.
Make a motion to strike the article.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article 16, street acceptance, wrong in road.
Make a motion to strike the article.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article 17, street acceptance, portion of Albert Drive.
Make a motion to strike the article.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 So I make a motion to accept articles, one, two, three, four, five, six, nine, 10, 11, 12 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article seven.
Yes, I asked just to put a hold. I just wanted to explain, there are a couple things that are going to be a little bit different since we had the Mass Municipal Modernization Act. Revolving funds, as you know, typically have had to be brought before town meetings and reauthorized, and usually also having a spending limit attached, and they were never really allowed to actually roll over. One of the things that happened with the Mass Municipal Modernization Act is if you adopt language in your, into a bylaw, that it will allow us to do the very things that we found ourselves having to encounter every year that just takes up time. And so the first part of the article, if you look at it, our town council has recommended we establish this as part of our bylaw. And so that's what the first part of it does. And we blended it with the actual revolving funds, either that we're setting up and/or that we would normally put in there. So this year, we have to do it. We have to adopt the bylaw. But next year, it'll be different. So it'll be more streamlined, and we've all advocated for that at a municipal level. The one thing that's different in the revolving funds is that unfortunately, last year, prior to my coming, and I think this board was, had recommendations from the former accountant to actually abolish certain revolving funds. That was an accounting decision, not necessarily merited in actual practice, but I think it was a judgment call that unfortunately caused an awful lot of disruption in some departments, particularly our senior center. I listened to both our senior center director and also the Council on Aging Chairwoman about how this has been very distressful for them. They used to collect some fees related to the van-ride transportation and also with regards to the senior center rental. And what we're trying to do is allow them to not only account for that, but to actually put it back to services. It became very nebulous when it went back to the general, general fund. Even though I committed to try to track that money, it makes more sense for them to be able to do it on their own. The other new revolving fund that you're seeing in there, so the other ones used to be there, but now what we're trying to do is allow it to be one, that when they collect this, it can, they can collect it from the two sources, but it has to go and be specific to costs related to providing services for our seniors. And then the Board of Health is a new revolving fund that would be put into place. It's being recommended by the Board of Health with regards to sticker fees for additional treasuries. It's being recommended by the Board of Health with regards to sticker fees for additional trash. There is a new effort on behalf of the waste hauler that we have for the community that is trying to go to a two-barrel maximum. And anybody that goes over that, that they would actually have to obtain stickers from the town and purchase them and put them on each additional trash bag. So the costs are gonna be related to providing the service. So that's a new one.
It's always been a two-barrel.
Right.
Does that open us up to any of that grant money for the pay-as-you-throw program?
Might.
It could. There would be something to look at that. I don't know specifically. I do know that there's, there's quite a few different programs that will do combination regardless of whether you have an actual hauler or not. So that would be a good thing to explore. I'll have to look into that. So that's what I, so, you know, by next year, we won't have, the article will be adopted as part of our bylaw, and it should hopefully streamline it. And then if we change it in the future, add to any of that, we'll be okay.
Fund the capital budget.
This I actually put in there only because it's something that we haven't really gone over with the Finance Committee. Our original five-year capital plan showed that we didn't have any major expenditure this year. There was an awful lot that was loaded onto it in 2017. There are some items coming back in 2019. But if you read the article, it talks about whether you're appropriating to transfer, you know, to pay for something or to actually potentially put some in. So I wanted to put it as a placeholder, because even with the OPEB, it was a very strong feeling last night with the Finance Committee and in speaking with our accountant, that our overall liability is, it's big for us, but it's small in comparison to most other communities. And it actually is a really good indicator, even if you put small amounts towards it, it really helps you in the future if you have to borrow money or you wanna be bonded and to increase your bond rating capacity. So I, I feel that the same way, even with our capital budget, even if we don't have something, we definitely have needs and we're not necessarily, you know, thinking about ways to do that. So we are gonna address it, hopefully, this coming Thursday. But before then, I'm actually gonna be making a few phone calls. So I asked to put it as a placeholder. I do have until the 24th. But if, if it seems like it shouldn't be there, we'll just take it out. But I wanted to at least put it in case there was something that I was missing. You know, because I'm going through a lot of documentation of things that had been there. I've talked with the major department heads, and from what I understand, there, there isn't anything on the docket. I also want to make sure there wasn't anything that was supposed to be purchased, that we had money, that wasn't completely expended, which, which case we might wanna, yeah, transfer it, so.
Switch over.
Right, exactly.
I, I think, I think that, that really needs some visibility in terms of planning for, you know...
Future.
Infrastructure, that kind of thing.
Every capital budget goes through different phases, depending on who's doing it. I mean, I can remember sitting there, putting, you know, 10,000 away for this. They would submit their budget and how they were gonna get to that new ambulance or the new whatever, you know, and it was stashing away so much for the next five years. So, you know, having it in there, and even if we're not funding and we have to strike it because we don't have any money for it, it, it really tells what we're doing by, by striking it too, because we don't have any money. Or it tells the people that, you know, we're not saving for these things, that, you know. So it does give a clear picture of our financial...
The numbers are becoming more and more solid. It's just that, you know, it's gonna be a determination, I think, from the Finance Committee and their recommendation going forward, that no matter how small it is, I think that this, I would like to still see money go towards that, even though we have this operating, because it all comes back to haunt us that even if we make marginal steps in an area, it could be very helpful to us in the long run.
So with that, no, doesn't sound like a descending, but I'll make a motion to accept Article seven and Article eight for the annual town warrant.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Were you aye?
Yeah.
I didn't hear you.
Well, I certainly can make the adjustments, and I will make certain that you're all notified to be able to, to come and sign it. And I'll, and I'll touch base also to make sure that Selectmen Barrett is aware that we're going forward with this particular warrant and the changes that they have. This keeps us on our schedule that you adopted in February, so I thank you for that.
I'd just like to recognize that our town administrator has been super in the last couple of days in getting these things together so quickly. Because the discussion ended around 5:45, and you've got revamped.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Some, like I said, there's a lot of team effort in all of this, and so I appreciate that. And it's not, not easy necessarily to do it from the jail cell item. So I just, I just wanna say that everybody's been pulling together. One final thing that I did not express about the warrant, and I think it's important, because I know our moderator would want us to let the board know, is that he is, he brought it up to this board before about wanting to do the consent article. And so, he looked at the routine articles where he's outlined it and that that's what he's gonna be looking to try to make that motion at the town meeting for Articles one through six, I believe. And then afterwards, go, go to the other format. But he, he's eager to do that. He's expressed it to both the Chairman and myself, and I, we didn't see a problem with that. Just like you will see some articles that traditionally used to be within our warrants, but legally, we do not have to do, and they've just become so routine that people just kept adding them, and other communities don't. You know, whether it's authorizing loans and a few others that we, town officers, authorizing the town officers, the Board of Selectmen to appoint people. We know that that's part of your job, so we don't need to put that in there. So that's why. I just wanted to let you know. So I think his recommendation also for doing a consent is important to him, and I, and I don't see a problem with that. Okay.
All business, next. The annual report. We have a memoriam dedication.
I didn't.
Oh.
I already looked at it. Yes, I did go through Milford. I did find Mary. So when I saw that in there, I knew that was fine.
Okay.
And then there wasn't, there was the list of the individuals, and I wasn't sure if... I had a question on this one.
Yes.
And I believe this gentleman served on the fire department, Henry Eisenberg. He served on the fire department.
Okay.
And I wanted to, oh, Harriet.
So why don't we add them?
Yes.
I just, I'm eager to have you guys be part of that, so.
Um, the only other one, did Joe Bonacco serve on any town committee? In official capacity?
I know he ran the ambulances for a short time.
He ran the ambulance here for a short time? So, you know, he, a former... So that was the only one that, these three, I knew yes. And then this one was, Joe was the one I had a question on, knowing that his father-in-law was the former chief, that he probably, he probably did some things. So... And Sylvia Johnson lived here forever, but I don't remember her being on anything, but that doesn't necessarily mean... I don't know if a knock on the door to talk to George, I know he's down the fires, or he used to be down the fire station here and there when Sylvia was alive. I'm not sure on that.
Well, I had offered originally Barry Sarlin and also Peter Harper, only because traditionally, it's been a few. But that does not mean, this is our Centennial, and we can absolutely put more.
So what they started doing was, if they had someone like Mary, who, you know, served her whole life, I mean, she, she registered people at our kitchen table along with Harriet, and, you know, that's why I registered to vote, right on Main Street in Harriet's kitchen table.
For I got my wedding license.
Yeah, so, but I mean, these people dedicated, I mean, for a long time, doing things. And I know that we've had a more profile of them, and then in the back of the people who have, who have also passed, but may not have had the longevity or, or, not for lack of heart in it, but the longevity of it. So I think we may need to do a supplemental page of honoring those others that gave to the town that we've lost.
So motion, who'd like?
So it'd be a motion for in memorial to Mary Solan, Peter Harper, and then to include as additional individuals is Henry Eisenberg, Robert LaFlem, Harriet Breton, and Joseph Anaco.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Okay.
It's not, it's not good that these people passed.
No, I know. That's the truth, true. But I'm glad, I'm glad, because it's an important piece of the town report. I know everybody looks at that early on.
So we've got another toll day coming up.
Yes, so Mr. Chairman, I put back before you the library, the library's request to have its toll day on the actual May 20th date. And we have both our police and fire sign off, as well as our highway survey with the notion of safety vests. And I think with that, I have all the other paperwork, the signed certificate, but for indemnification, but this was the only piece that we were looking for the sign off, so that I can at least tell them.
Motion?
Want me to make a motion?
A second?
Typically, this comes through the Friends. I don't think we can allow our town departments to do fundraising. We had the issue with Centennial.
Oh, good point.
So this is taken, this is taken by the Chairman of the Library Board, where it would need to come from the Friends of the library. It's a technicality, and I'm sure it was just Colleen was available to fill out the paperwork. But I don't believe that we can actually allow our committees to fundraise, so this would need to be refilled.
Good point.
And come from the Friends of the library. But as I said before, we'll keep them as that May 20th date for the Friends of the library. But I don't think we can legally allow the, the Library Board to, to do this. So.
Table? No.
Just won't make any action on it.
Yeah, we'll just have them resubmit and put it at our next meeting.
Do you know who the Chairman is of the Friends? Just out of top, I don't.
Is it Foley?
I don't know.
Huh? Is it Lynn? Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay, I'll, I'll call tomorrow.
No, she's on the board also. I thought it was Lynn Foley. Yeah, it just, we can't, we can't fundraise as a town.
No, no, it's true, actually.
Because I know for Centennial Committee, we were allowed to fundraise, and we could only do it within a five-year window, and, and it's a whole state kind of thing. But I think we just need to, I didn't catch it the last time I saw this.
No, I actually was thinking it was from the Friends. I was reading it quickly.
Yeah, but she did write Chairman of the Library Board.
I was more intent on wanting to get the sign offs, that I wasn't paying attention. So that's a good catch.
Yeah.
So I'll go and ask that.
But, you know, obviously, we're saving that date for them. They have first.
Selectmen's forum. Tom, do you have anything?
I would just like to thank all the voters for their vote of confidence. Appreciate it. Look forward to serving you all.
Ms. Lee?
Community Zumba tomorrow.
That's a big deal.
It's on, it's on the website. I did put that in.
The Girl Scouts applied for the cultural grant, and we'll be up there tomorrow, so I'm hoping for a big turnout for, for that. And other than that, just, I know that the Finance Committee's been working hard, and our School Committee's been working hard, and Jen's been working hard trying to get all the budgets and everything ready for town meeting, and it's never an easy task. And I think all of their efforts, you know, will be showcased that night, but it's, it's a lot of work. So I just reach out and say thank you to those people involved.
Thank you.
I'll make sure that they know that too, especially if you're attending different meetings.
I'd like to ask the town administrator, do we, because last meeting, we had the playground. Has there been any action or any, anything on that?
Yeah, I usually follow up. I followed up with the chief, who's actually on the Playground Committee, and expressed that a resident had come forward. And if you noticed in our minutes, we made sure that we codified what I thought was important for her to address. One of the things that I asked the chief is that he can make sure that actually she gets put on the agenda. There is some, I guess, information that she may not be aware of, and it's the type of equipment is actually supposed to be all ADA-compliant equipment, and she might not have known that. So I thought that the best thing to start is to let that committee do its diligence. So rather than me trying to do that, we do have a committee. So the member who's been working with the Chairman in setting the agenda, I asked her to reach out and to have her actually come and be part of that agenda, so. That's the follow-up.
And when would that meeting be, their meeting?
I don't have that in front of me. I said whatever their next meeting would be, but it should be, you can look on the website.
I did. There was nothing there, so I'm not sure what the...
I wouldn't know. So Kevin Delgizzi, you could reach out to him?
I did email him. He never responded, so.
Since last week?
Uh, yeah.
So I did speak to one of the committee individuals, and they said that whenever their meeting was, was when she was going to be away on vacation.
Okay.
So I don't know where they stood at that point, but I know that there had been a date, and it didn't work. So I don't know if they've maybe, haven't scheduled because of that, or if they've, I don't know what the situation is, but...
Usually, within a week, I wouldn't necessarily imagine that they might just say that they're gonna have it. But I think they're aware of that, and I think they definitely understood that it was brought up here, so. But I'll ask Mr. Delgizzi if I can be more successful in getting in touch with him. I'm pretty diligent about that, so I'll try that. If you need his telephone number, too.
I got the information, just never responded, so.
What was that? I'm sorry.
I got his information, but he never responded, so.
Okay. It was sort of like this weekend, you know, we were trying to get you hitched up with the IT guy and back and forth, and, you know, sometimes that happens.
He did reach out to me yesterday, so we'll be working on that.
Right, okay, sounds good.
The only thing I have is the annual town report, and I'm just wondering if there's any input to the Selectmen's...
So I did read it. I know it's lengthy. You know, I could easily make some recommendations, but it's not going to, you know, it's just cutting down maybe a half a page. I think it's thorough. I think, I think we've had a big year. And honestly, I felt like the information we're giving is, you know, sequential. It's factual. It's a report. And it's not, you know, four paragraphs of, "Thank you, and we did this, and we did that." It's, it's, it's real information. So like I said, I was, I started to be like, "Oh, we can shorten it by cutting this or doing this." But in the end, I was like, "I'm maybe saving a half a page." So what's, at that point, I didn't feel that it was... I, I think if we leave it, that it's appropriate. That was just my feeling. I know it's lengthy, but it's true. And, you know, I know you spent time going through the minutes and really getting all the highlights, so I'm okay with it. I mean, if we need to cut it down, we can, but I was fine.
Andrew?
No.
Good.
I'm comfortable with that.
That's all I had. All right, but perhaps Jennifer, Mrs. Callahan could give us a early look at what the Annual Report might look like this year.
I'm hoping, although I'm meeting a really fast deadline, I'm trying to make it look a little bit different because it is the Centennial, so there is a little bit more to it. As far as reports, I've received the majority reports from most, all boards, I think with the, or departments with the exception of, I think, two. So I think that part of it is good. The other piece, the creative piece, I've met with a different printer to look at a way we can make it look eye-catching and commemorative. So I'm in the process of doing that design piece of it with them and hoping to add some elements of truly Millville, so that when someone sees it, they'll be able to identify it and also to make it an interesting read. Obviously, it has a lot of material in it that captures the whole year, but having said that, I wanted it to look also something that you could leave on your coffee table and, you know, it wouldn't look like the typical annual report of my community.
And the theme would be centered on the Centennial.
Yes, yes, that's a whole nother piece of it, yep. And so I actually have a meeting tomorrow with the Historic Commission in the morning, and one of the things I did express to Margaret Carroll and to Lois is that any other kinds of photographs that they might have that we might be able to incorporate in different places. I'm still mindful of wanting to keep the cost down, but part of it was also having some creativity and out-of-the-banks thinking to make it look very different. Would have been easy just to do it the way we always did it. I'm not always about easy, so I thought it would be more about the value of making people enjoy reading it and understanding that it's been a significant year in many, many ways. Some to really celebrate and others to show that we're changing and moving forward in the face of a lot of challenges.
Speaking of challenges, Town Administrator Town Hall update.
Yeah, I'm not going to talk about the Town Hall per se, building-wise, because it's moving along, but as part of the Town Hall update, I had received a very short invitation pretty much the day before to have the opportunity as a follow-up to representatives, legislators that had come to go into Boston and meet with not the Secretary A and F, but one of their council members to talk about the $800,000 bond that was put in 2014 by then Senator Richard Moore. And what we were trying to do is meet with A and F to talk about what the potential is with regards to that, because that referred to the old Town Hall. And with potentially looking at tweaking the language, I did discuss that with them and with her, because it was an individual. But this person, Paula, would, I think, was very attentive. Both our legislators were really good at being able to advocate for us as well. And one of the things I did learn is I was asking about not just this current year with old bonds, but within a couple of weeks, there may be the potential for another bond bill filing, in which case then we might be able to have an opportunity at the funding apple potentially twice. But what's more important is now that we know what predicament we're in, it may allow us to actually put our request in through our legislators. And if there is funding, which it looks like there will be funding attached to that particular capital bond bill, that would be very important because right now, we don't necessarily have the funding attached to the 2014, but I think we made the case. I will say that I express the imperative for us is as we're stabilizing ourselves, we still have to look to the future. We need to stabilize ourselves and figure out what is the future for us in terms of a Town Hall and where do we go after and once we are stabilized. And I said, you know, it's no different than losing your Town Hall to a tornado, really. I mean, it's just you're there one day and you can't be there the next day. And actually, she was very empathetic and understood that the difference is just that when you face a tornado, you know, there are federal funds that you can access in terms of the emergency. And in this case, we've had the sole burden of trying to figure out how to contend with this on our own. So with that, I say thank you to the board and the townspeople because in a lot of ways, I think we've been as creative as possible. And I think the staff is, you know, borne the brunt of this, but more importantly, the public has, because we've, we've had to ask them to adapt to a lot of changes in the way that we do services. And so I think overall, it's a very good meeting and the follow-up that I'll have with her is looking at the timeline. And obviously, I thank both Representative Kuros and Senator Fatman for having been there as well. And so like I said, you know, every time we have the opportunity to do that, it's going to be important. So, so that's part of the Town Hall, hopeful in going forward, and I'll keep you apprised of that. The second item is the Mr. Community Housing Resources. That's just a fancy way of talking about the abandoned housing initiative. I had Andy Horwath, who is the president of that particular nonprofit program, come out and actually look at the Mug Pub along with a couple of the sites that we feel are both blighted and/or abandoned. It was a very healthy discussion that we had initially and then went out on-site. And the chief contributed to that, and he was very, I know it sounds kind of crazy, but he was very excited because he felt that the actual properties that we were showing him really qualified. And so the RFP for that program is coming out. If you'll remember, I've been following this very closely since the fall. You had also had brought in the AG's representative about that grant funding program. And so as soon as the grant thing is released, we're going to be looking at that, as well as a few other potential receivership initiatives, which may include both either houses that could be potentially qualified for that, to improve blighted houses or abandoned houses as opposed to demolishing them. The Mug Pub is a demolish, and he agreed that there's no, there's no saving of that property. So the other potential is to look at some properties that we could use some help with the AG's office in actually forcing it to be cleaned up and improved. And so it was a really great visit, actually. And the last item on the agenda is the Heritage Corridor Bike Racks. As you know, you approved us to go and enter into an initiative in which there was a regional approach for a grant program for obtaining additional bike racks along the bikeway. And we're one of the communities that benefited from that, with the only additional cost was going to be the shipping. And so the actual bike racks have arrived. And so we're going to be planning to get them in, our highway guys that stop by, and we're going to talk about, some of them have to be mounted to asphalt and some are actually in the ground. So they're colorful, they're modern, and it's great. So we'll put those in together. And that's the conclusion of my Town Administrator update.
Thank you.
And you just have minutes.
No minutes.
Nope. Oh, yeah, no, we don't have minutes, sorry. And we don't have an executive session this evening. I have no news to report on that.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Moved.
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's 9:20.